Let's find, let's uh, I guess I have to call the meeting door.
Okay.
Let's uh, who's gonna talk? David?
Welcome to Whitmire, our sunny sides, rather.
Uh, so, what are we gonna do? We're gonna just look at this or?
I can show everybody what I had, the J E Dunn guys marked out. And it's obviously not a set spot, I just kind of give you an idea of what the footprint would look like.
Is it sixty by a hundred?
It's, it's a hundred and ten by forty-eight is what they had marked. And they walked it off roughly, it's not exact.
And would that be the actual structure or the structure plus room around it?
That's probably the pad, is what, that's a hundred and ten by forty-eight.
That was just concrete though.
And then, whatever everything on top of.
Look at that.
Thanks all for showing up, this is awesome.
You guys want a skate park, right?
Yeah!
I picked, if the part over here with the yellow flags, if you see that area with the yellow flags, that's the...
In your opinion, in your opinion, does that do less damage to the economic integrity than over here?
I picked, I thought that area was the best because I thought it would not interfere with any of the disc off.
Well, I'm not concerned about that, it's interfering with somebody just helping make the vector.
Well, then also, I figured if, ten years from now, somebody decided to want to sell the whole piece, you could keep a half acre and look for the skate park and not, and then sell the rest if you wanted to. That was my, if you put it, my thoughts was if you stuck it right in the middle,
Oh, we're not doing that.
Then, it's, you know, that kind of meant up the whole piece.
But it's, you think it wouldn't be any less fun than some over here?
Uh, no, you'll just have to redo some disc off stuff if you pick someone else.
That's not a corner either, corner's way on down, so, six one, half dozen of it.
And even buy the gravel parking lot, so it was convenient.
What's all the stadium? How are you, buddy? What is these?
So this would be the corner?
I thought those were them.
I thought this was the line right here. Yellow flag.
Oh, what's that, what's that one over there?
That one's something else, somebody else put that there, that was here when we got here.
And so you figured that where the orange stakes are plus eight or ten feet on each side with some, a bush or whatever, or a berm?
Yeah, you know, you could think, or you could push it further down, cause we own obviously down to the bush.
It's fucking easy, right? No hassle with contractors coming in and out?
Oh, it's, yeah, yeah, it'd be, it'd be meeting dirt. No, this, they said that if you use this spot here, it literally scrapes topsoil off and...
Down's easy, cause I know the contractor's out of time. He has a group of people that are gonna work with him that have volunteered their time, but they're gonna be leaving in a week or two. This has to happen today.
I think that's, that's the goal, I mean, I think we want to...
Because if we, if we drag our feet another week or two, all his help is gone. He, he's gonna save us thousands and thousands of dollars if we pass that up.
I, I think there's a fire under us today.
Good, I'm glad to hear, it looks, apparently there's a fire brewing here.
See, they, they still wanna bring in some dirt though, because some parts are elevated, some parts are not, right? Is that the case, Justin? We talked to him?
He didn't act like he was needing to bring in any dirt.
He said he would, all he had to do is scrape it.
Okay.
I mean, they might, he saw somebody just taking topsoil and then pouring.
So there was not the need, the dirt to build the mold and then pour concrete?
Justin's saying, he said all they had to do is scratch his topsoil off, and I'm assuming any features they put in it, they may just sculpt it out of rebar and pour it.
So the reason that needed dirt at Memorial Park was...
Probably because it's sloping, we'll be thinking about it. I mean, if it happened right out here, we'd wanna plant some trees for some shade though, like, you know, cause then when it's ninety degrees in the summertime, nobody will wanna show up. Nice spot over, I mean a dipper, but there's a nice spot over there, nice and shady here. Seems like it's away from disc off.
They're, they're gonna sell all of this.
Okay.
Maybe, no, not... We would like to have it available still, the option.
Keep the marketability of the property intact, as much as possible.
I can handle a little heat. I don't need shade. Only thing I see is, you're gonna have a lot of traffic with kids coming across the road down there. So you might need like a walk, crosswalk, better crosswalk go there, keep kids coming from the high school.
This is also the first site since what the council wanted to see, so...
If the council decided in principle on this piece, when would the final decision have to be made about being exacted?
Uh, I would say it's probably gonna be fairly soon. I don't know, they need to, need to, it's probably gonna be decided on the, whatever drawings we decide to go with on, from the designers. Uh, Nathaniel and Chris out there here, I don't know if they've got thoughts, this is probably the first time they've seen it. Chris, this wasn't interfere with the disc off play, would you?
Obviously, this is the furthest tee pad going in that direction. And then, that basket there, it's a tee box, it was a bad deer, I mean, there may be some overthrow. Uh, but I wouldn't think this far over, it'd be, be abundant enough to really worry about, but it ma, it will happen. Uh, and then, and... Yeah, I mean, no windows on that itself.
Should it be farther down? Should it be?
Anywhere up here, and that's maintenance wise on our end of it, we're, this up here will be fine. Uh, we can mow around it, trim around it, whatever we need to do, maintenance wise, it's not gonna be any more or any less. Obviously, it's gonna be less, cause it'll be a huge concrete pad there. Um, but this isn't gonna impact our maintenance, mowing, anything we do up here in this area, or if it was to go down further. It's not gonna affect this.
So I think the answer, Joe, is this upper corner somewhere, where we're standing that direction to the Ford John's.
Is this looking to be like a fences twenty-four hour park? Is this gonna be something that can come all hours and skate? I'm just wondering, noise, noise wise, I see homes on two sides over there, nothing over that way, is that something that would be?
All those things can be figured out later on.
But, I mean, I say that only because, you know...
Some, some of us do enjoy going to parks where it's a little early in the mornings, say seven, eight o'clock in the morning before the sun hits. And I just, I, noise, things like that, I can, I, you know...
I would want you to be able to skate anytime, there's a light right there, but I would imagine there'd be a rule board that said dusk till dawn or something like that.
Yeah, something like that, something, yeah.
I don't think that you're gonna get arrested if you're out here skating.
No, I'm not saying that, it's just noise, complaints, the home.
Those two houses are breaking.
Right, okay.
Those are kinda distant, really, the four plex there.
I mean, landscaping and trees, I don't know if you said it's something about shade, but you could have a few bushes and a couple trees around it and do something to... To where it's not just a concrete pad in the middle of a field, and it could be, you can make it look like it fits here better.
We have raised over three thousand dollars, so we could try to buy, buy some trees or something. So if that, if that's a deciding factor, we'll put some trees in.
Comes pretty darn early, or, you know, you thinking about putting lights in?
There's at least one right there though, I mean, that's not gonna give a lot of light, but it's...
I was just concerned in the ability to come before, or, you know, skate a little bit.
At the other location, the contractor already talked to Duke Power, and they had volunteered to put in some lights.
I will say, most of your other skate parks, you mentioned Palis, they purposely do not put lights on. So it's hurt after hours activities, not for the skater's problem, from other things that might create, uh, for being dark and having dark corners and things like that. Cherokee's is not lit, Wayne's was not lit, uh, I think Palis is, but I'm pretty sure they closed the actual outer gates.
Nelson, I would suggest that we open it or second plan this fall.
I know how things work, like we all do, even if we wanted to go there, by the time we ran by the county, got permission, got this, that done, got, uh, finally get a deed or a lease in our hands, I'm, I think we're gonna be pushed beyond any timetable that the contractors would be willing to wait.
Cause we didn't know the time was, it had never been told to us.
Yep.
Got, you know, that we should've had the dirt and all of that moving, and we'd never get that.
When we found out about the, the equipment leaving Friday, the council, everybody thought we had until September.
Yeah, we didn't know that, so that puts a whole nother thing on that dog park area.
It does, yeah.
It, it would never work, time wise.
That sounds like a good idea to me.
Yeah, I mean, it, it wouldn't.
It would ultimately be probably the best place, but ultimately, we don't have the luxury of, of coming out of somebody else's pocket waiting on ultimate.
I think traffic wise too, if you're trying to move equipment into that J C park during the day, when people are going in and out of work, it causes a lot of backup.
Well, I think they were talking about the dog park.
Yeah, they're talking about the dog park. The J C park, he has a design where he's gonna put his construction road beside the main road, so he doesn't affect any of the entryways. So are we ready to go to the second spot now?
Yeah, we, the second was gonna be the dog park spot, if you don't wanna go to it, then...
The firehouse police station.
Yeah, I don't have them marked at the firehouse police, but we can...
Can, can we, before we even go there, can we talk a little bit? Maybe Nathaniel can shed a little light on some time stuff, the property in front of the firehouse. Don't you need to, there's some stuff there that might end up seeing, or that we didn't know when we discussed?
Yeah, so we, we have a new sewer line coming through that area that's designed already. And probably looking, looking at this fiscal to get it done, but looking at their schedule for installation of that part, that timeframe is gonna work.
You couldn't even stub a line in half that long?
Why not?
Cause it's going through the middle of that property, right there, right where, you know, you're, that's probably three hundred feet. We started, we tried to get a contract tomorrow, we couldn't get anybody in the next two months to get started.
Then you can't reroute, reroute it enough to pull in?
We've looked and looked, and that was, that was kind of the driving force when we got that property, you know, one, one scenario.
To have access for a sewer line.
Getting the gravity plug in there too.
Well, hell, I think we're sitting on ground zero.
Well, I didn't know, I heard that just since we had discussed, and I thought it might grow some...
I don't believe him, I know that...
That's why we bought the property though.
I know that he could reroute it if we really wanted to, we got him, but I think we might...
But because of all the time, J E Dunn's, um, doesn't seem to fit in.
Hey, I know a lot of y'all here really like the idea of the J C park, and you don't understand why the J C's park's not a great, um, spot for it. One of the reasons is because that park, the culvert issue, causes flooding upstream. If we were to put a park there, add dirt and add concrete, it could very well lead to worse flooding upstream. We're gonna get yelled at, it'll be a thorn in our side for decades to come. Um, that, and you get rid of a large grassy area that's a park already in exchange for a skate park, which I think we need a skate park, obviously with this turnout, I mean, this is great that y'all are here today. Um, but we're trading one use for another, I mean, we're trading a soccer field, or a kickball field, or a baseball field for a skate park, and I think it behooves us to add on to our recreational opportunities as opposed to just switching one out for the other. Yeah, man. Sounds like this is it, the decision's made, right? We're voting it here, because there's no other place to do it.
If I get a vote, then I'd say, yeah, let's do it. I, I just, I just know the contractor, and I've talked to him, he will, he is gonna put concrete in here by hand. He, the contractor, Steve, said he will come here on weekends and form that himself if he has to, that's how adamant he is. He's a fifty-two, four-year-old man who BMX biked, and he skateboarded, he's a skateboarder. He wants to do a very good job, he doesn't wanna just put a flat pad in with some metal ramps. He wants to build something that we're proud of, that he's proud of, he's got grandkids that he wants to be proud to show them.
The J C's park is...
But we can adapt this right here.
I drew this to scale, this is the whole back field of the J C's. This is the six thousand square foot plan right here that I gave Mr. Subtles.
This is John Sisneros, he's been designing our skate park.
Yeah.
And everything he designed would fit right here easily, also.
So that, that plan right there would fit in this markout?
Yeah, it would. Fit in the J C's park, and far, far away from that creek as well. But, once we get a skate park, I'm happy. We are all happy.
Well, you know, I think some people don't remember, but my other grandson, his brother, who is, what, eight years?
Twelve.
Twelve years older than he, was a skateboarder in this town when he lived with me and went to early college. And back then, it was the same thing, these kids needed a place to skate. And my husband and I would have to go over Cowie Mountain, there was a place there in the warehouses, where they had built an indoor kind of skate park place to take him, because there was no place now. These kids really, you know, they're not into organized sports, right now, he owns his own house, and he is self-sustaining and has all kinds of businesses, so we need to give these kids some reason to stay in town.
I agree, good work.
Yeah.
Well, I raised one, so...
Well, it is for those people, but I'm gonna do it on a park here, live around here.
You like over there? Save the spot, is even where I got to, whether it's here or...
I'm not ready to save a spot right here on this, until we have, until we look at it a little bit more.
Look fair enough?
I'm, I'm, I'm not one of these people who finds the first time I walk into a store, it's how I look to see what all the merchandise shows. And I think we need to look, we said we're gonna look at the other one, let's look at the other one. Both of them, I thought we were gonna look at all four of them.
I mean, we couldn't, logistically, you know how they'd have to put it on the agenda for the next meeting? You know exactly how long it would take for us to get a deed out of the county for that.
I'm speculating, it's gonna take a long time, I'm speculating, it's gonna take a short time. But what I'm saying is, whether it takes a long time or a short time, what you're gonna need to do is put something that's gonna last, that these people have been enjoying for a long time.
There's nobody saying anything different on that jack.
Don't, don't, don't throw something away, let your body be, nor give something that you want right now.
You lead the way, Bob.
No, well, I just play up the rainbow, I don't...
I'm up thinking, we've already got a little shade coming.
Yeah, we're really noticing the difference in temperature and shade.
So is this part of the town property also?
Yeah, well, thinking a little, down a little farther.
Problem solver right there.
That's awesome. Do we, do we have a survey of this property, Joe?
Oh, yeah.
So we can probably find the pins?
Oh, yeah, this probably, this probably...
So wherever this line, ten feet away from the line, and a couple trees over here? No, I'm saying like landscape bushes, trees.
I think we owned about where Joe is, I think. I think, I'm not be rough, I mean, it's in here somewhere, I don't think we owned the edge of the park.
We own that gravel parking lot there.
Oh, yeah, the gravel parking lot's all ours.
I mean, this right here would be a bad spot.
I was gonna say, you could shift it down and...
We're looking to tuck it into a, a, a non-useful piece of the property.
I call them shade leaves, entrance companies don't like to bring in their skate parks. Shade structures might be a better solution than trees.
But these are trees that are up, it's plenty to get the leaf blower out.
No, it's just more maintenance.
Yeah, I like it down a little more.
I like this better than right there, and better than over there. This, this or far away is better than right there to build it. Some of that can come out.
Yeah, but I mean, as long as you got it in, can, uh...
There's a big one that's good, maybe that little bit you can sand, or wall, whatever it is.
Were you in Rangeville? I talked to the park director there, and he said that is the most huge facility in Rangeville.
Somewhere from here.
When I got to talking, I talked to Palms, that park's director said, skate parks are not used in any other facility. And then I talked to Morgans, because everybody's telling Morgans, it's the nearest skate park, because everything's...
Any type of residual noise from this, I mean, there's a factory right in the middle of residential neighborhood.
And this right in here's gonna, for those conductors...
Screened for a mortgage house?
And they don't even have...
Obviously, this would make a great spot for a couple picnic tables, or one of them things you chain a bicycle to, or whatever it is.
Like, it's a comfortable exercising temperature right now.
Okay, there's a motion made to go to the, uh, Memorial Park, all in favor. All right, we're headed to the Memorial Park.
As years go by, don't you lose those, as years go by, there's been grass going off?
I used to have soccer fields here, because this, it was always available, I'd have soccer fields.
And, and it would, again, what David said, it would expand our recreational, rather, rather than... John has designed this where we tuck right against that, that wall of trees, and, but, but I do like the idea of having another park. Well, it's just, this is, uh, I, I personally...
Even spot you pick, you're gonna have some neighbor that doesn't.
I was with her here with the contractor, and he mentioned that the actual range here, the culverts are too small.
How much, how much this has been merged with the plane? Kids at the schools, kids in the...
I, I can't answer that, uh, Justin might, and I, I'm, I'm...
I mean, the proximity of the high school here has got to be more beneficial than Whitmire. I'm not saying Whitmire's not, and don't get me wrong, I'm not arguing against Whitmire, I'm just saying...
Well, the plus is here, it's got a pavilion, it's got bathrooms, it's got, it's got other activities, but, but we're gonna take away... But we're gonna take away all of it from the... He, the contractor was gonna add a walkway right away, cause there's some kids in our daycare over there, that they have to walk all the way around and come in. And here, they would have a nice walkway into there. That would be dedicated right there. That's a, that's at least a five thousand dollar walkway for them.
I wanna go to the walkway in this park, whether we do...
That's what I was just telling Jack.
Oh, you're standing beside, sorry.
And I think the floodway line is not much, floodway line is about that. So that's how much green space is kept up.
Up from the floodway, up the flood plain, floodway.
Yeah, flood plain, all the flags are in the flood, flood plain.
How often does this get mowed, you know?
Uh, probably a week, a week.
When it flooded down here last time, it did, how far?
It came all the way back.
It came all the way back, you know?
It flooded all the way back.
That's what I thought.
That's the time it flooded back and went to the hill.
I mean, that's something that...
Last February, last February, when it...
Bear in mind too, if it's concrete, it's not, it's not a flow water, so...
No, no, it just has to be hosed off, like the basketball.
All I'm saying is, it's, it's concrete, it's not, that ground's not absorbing any water. So it could flood more with less, less rainfall.
Get an engineer to tell you in a way, if you're running out of money, he'll do the calculations. Jonathan found two more skaters just on the way down through here.
This park, this park was put in about nineteen sixty-five, donated land. And, uh, I was, if it was sixty-five, I'd been ten years old living right in town. And, there's so many of us had birthday parties, and just all kinds of events around. I remember the J C's were painting at one time, I doubt it was the first coat of paint, but there's a little bit of beer drinking involved on a hot Saturday. About halfway through, they saw they was running out of paint, instead of going to the store to get more, they just started adding water to the paint they had. And I think it ended up a little different tent as they got closer to the end. But the J C's, of course, they're not with us anymore, that group just, what did they, they just dissolved. Under thirty-five, I think, I think it was that was always, you could be in the J C, or the other ones who got, got this started.
But the, but the property was donated to the town by Siler?
Slagel.
Slagel?
Slagel, Slagel Memorial Property, and this all is in the same...
Do you know if there's any restrictions when it was donated?
I think it's got to be for, I think it's got to be for recreation, or there's probably some reversion on it.
About twenty years ago, this is where we originally had a skate park here, we, we had, we built ramps here, we, they let us do that. And I don't know the reason of why they kicked us out, but then they took us up there to throttle it.
I was told, I was told that it was an issue of overstaying the privilege, such as staying longer at night. And one thing, the cops would come down, and there was a little bit... and there was a little bit of disagreement about something, and it kind of ended that way.
It's great to hear this story, because I've heard the legend of this park.
Hell, yes.
Twenty years, twenty years ago, you guys did a skate park, so you just built your own.
We built one, and we come out here, and we built quarter pipe and a bank ramp, and we just...
And also, I was told that the behind the eye doctor was the little tree, and that didn't go over too well.
Yes, we went, we was there.
Hey, anybody else here who's a skate here with the DIY?
Yeah, so currently, under our current insurance plan, we're only opening a couple. We're looking to change that, that's current status of that park. So there's no adults or volunteers there. Well, we have a problem with... Insurance companies don't really have an area that we've been working on out. And honestly, we may go hunting here, just so we can... Three ramps. Yeah, but she knows more about the park than I do, because I'm just a park owner. We already have a park. Spain says we're wait.
No, it's northeast corner.
Y'all squeeze in here, y'all can hear me. We're not shutting the media out, come on in. All right, I think we're ready to finalize this.
Any objections to the final one?
No case.
That's what...
So we're just, we're out the one at the Dog Park.
I think it was strictly because of the time constraints that we don't own it. And by the time, they're really acting as though it's a huge time crime, too.
Well, Justin talked to him, and when Justin sent us that email, he was pretty... I haven't talked to the people that done, what had done said about our timeline.
The timeline.
He said pretty much the end of their, their equipment that they have on site was leaving this week if we were going to need equipment. Down here, we obviously need lots of equipment, posters, and... The other ones obviously is minimal equipment.
But the Dog Park is...
Lot, just as much, if not more, equipment.
More equipment, because we got trees to clear.
Yeah, because it's not... He said their equipment was leaving this week. He didn't tell me a day.
He has a D6 dozer he was going to use, is going to another job.
Yeah, if they're pulling out this group, then won't be doing any work here. If we did, we'd have to contract somebody. We'd have to use our own equipment and...
They could be saying a week, and then ten days, or two workdays, or maybe a working day week, I don't know.
He has a timeline of guys that's going to work with concrete, guys that are bending rebar, and those guys are here working, but they're going to volunteer their time to do this. I have two, two boys that are skateboarders, and I don't want them skating on the street. They've been skating on the street. Well, I'm, I really, I'm barely treading water here. I don't know what I'm doing.
But you've been talking to Jay, you don't see, Steve?
He was with us.
Yeah, he was right.
He was there when we all met Thursday, or Friday. When we went out to Martha's site, he was with us. And he is a very passionate about this, and his feelings are a little hurt, because he had three newspaper articles saying that this spot was approved, and he had plans, and then all of a sudden, the rug was pulled out from him, because he has plans for raising money, charity for this park too through his company, and those are all getting pushed back. And he needs, he needs an answer soon, because the guys that volunteered to move the dirt and do the work, he's going to another job much more. And so that's why we're getting all this thousands of dollars of free work and free materials. He's got set up with Southern Concrete to give us concrete. But if we don't do something soon, we'll just talk about this year, we'll talk about this year's from now, about, remember when that guy was going to give us a free skateboard park? All right, is someone ready to make a motion? Okay, Mr. Collins has a motion.
What is the motion?
That we use the portion of Whitmore property.
Not specifically as to which portion of it.
I'm making the motions out, okay? That we use the portion of Whitmore property, probably it would be considered the northeast corner. The one closest to where they have their paved part mark, the last piece that section we looked at. The quarter Johns are closer to First Street, for, to be laid out as appropriate. I mean, as, I can't tell you exactly where each...
But you're talking about that corner right there, besides the parking lot.
Yeah, that's my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of Joe's motion, signified by raising your hand? Any objection?
No, no, I voted for Joe.
Well, y'all.
I don't know who's...
It was unanimous.
It was unanimous, okay. All right.
Did y'all hear that?
Yeah.
That last corner of the Whitmore property we were just at. Thank you.
No, he said he can use the front end loader for scraping.
Ladies and gentlemen, I will... He needs a piece of paper or something. Somebody has to officially say, "Okay, Steve."
It will be in a minute.
If I can interrupt you for a second, he also needs about $14,000 for an engineered drawing. He has a company, Color Design, I believe it is, has an engineered drawing of a skate park, but legally and properly.
Let him talk to our manager.
And at that last meeting, they were still waiting for another quote in. So that would have to happen at the next meeting, though, the authorization to spend the money.
Okay, I have one other item of business. I need a vote of the board to add Ms. Owens to our financial statements. Is that correct?
Second?
Wait, I'm trying to find out what we're adding.
Be authorized with a bank account, authorize the sign-on documentation bonded by the town.
That's what I was going to say.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion, a second. Do I have a second? Oh, we got it. Motion and second, all in favor. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to adjourn this, uh, this part of the meeting, and, uh...
Well, I make, yeah, I have to make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah. I have a motion and a second, all in favor. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned now. Thank y'all for being here.
Yeah, thank you guys. Thank you for showing up.
Thank you.
Without y'all, it wouldn't have happened. There you go, you were there. You started it all years ago.